Welcome to the, I think this is March. The morning meeting of the library trustees' meeting. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes for the February meeting?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second? Any corrections or discussion or anything for the minutes? Okay, all ones in favor? Any opposed? Okay, those who do. Want to welcome Bill Hope from the Foundation for his personally official meeting with us and also Amy Beth Miller from the Daily Times. We'd like to have you as well as the rest of you today. Just a couple of things under my report. I don't know if you noticed when you walked down and came in the front area and looked, maybe looked to the right and saw maybe the bishop statue that's covered up. We've not seen it yet, but just a reminder that the celebration and the unveiling of that sculpture will be this Friday at 5:30. And they're also dedicating the bridge at that time. That's still the plan, isn't it?
Yes.
Manny, okay. Still dedicating the bridge. The city will be, representatives will be here to dedicate the bridge as well. So hopefully some of you will be able to attend that celebration. And a second thing, Manny and I attended a workshop last week virtually. And then we had four, I think, staff members that were able to attend in Crossville at the circle, circle library, arc circle. And I'll have to say, it was a workshop on planning space in your library as well as marketing and some other things. And it was probably one of the better workshops that I have attended that's been dedicated. It was a national known expert. One of his dogs is to come consult and we will come in and look at various things in your library such as the traffic flow and what you have. Display and how you can rearrange shelves or rearrange tables or rearrange a lot of things to make it much more functional. And in thinking about how libraries name change in the future. So Manny and, or Summer want to say anything else. I think there's some things, I've got some things that I think we can use in our long range plan. And I'm hoping that the staff, as they start looking at just long range planning as well, will have some things that they can use from there.
The training was incredible. Was it Manny is purchasing the book for us so that we can do a deeper dive? And what is it? It is, it was very insightful on the power of observation. And it is a type of training even though it's about, well, it's about library spaces. However, every single library staffer could benefit from it because they start to see their space and the way the patron would. He talks about friction points and how something that can start as such a, such a small little element of friction. If that is repeated every time they come in and have a library experience in time, that's enough to stop them from being library users. So there was just lots of great stuff from it. If you ever get a chance and they come back around, please consider attending because you will benefit and so will the library because of it. So it's great. We're excited.
What was the name of that book?
Library Spaces is part of it. Hold on just a second. I will, I will pull up my email and I'll get back to you.
Library, okay, send it to me later. Focus on the patron or the staff or a combination of both.
Both, yes.
And do we see us integrating that information as part of the ongoing planning for our library?
Yes, I do think there were some ideas and some projects that we can definitely incorporate here upstairs as well as downstairs, definitely. There's also another book here at the library, different author that I'm going to start reading, but Planning Optimal Library Spaces.
Yes, the title of the book is Library Space Planning, A PLA Guide. We're getting the ebook of it.
That's all the reports that I have. Manny, if you want to. From yours?
Yeah, before I get to, because I'm going, we have Eric here, he'll be into the projects. But I just wanted to point out a few things. The cafe scored a perfect score, 100 within the last month. Health expector came in towards the end of February. So congratulations to Chelsea and to everyone involved, staff that made that happen. We always score between 99 and 100. It's nice to see that 100 this time. So kudos to Chelsea and the entire staff that mans the cafe. We also had our ILS system, our software that our staff use to check items in and out. It's called Atrium. And we actually had the company that handled Atrium here at the library, which was really neat. Because we had libraries from actually all over the state of Tennessee. There was a library out of, was it near Jackson? Here we had Lenore City, Pigeon Forge, Cleveland Bradley came. It was an entire day, entire workshop. It was nice to see that, just to learn some new innovative tips and tricks for Atrium as well as new ways of pulling reports. That was really great to see. I'd like to see that happen on an annual basis. My old ILS would do that several times a year and you just get to, you know, hear from others and just hear what they're doing, some shortcuts. So it's great. I was, I was very happy to see the attendance like that. We also had corporal break bill here on February 21st that finished part two of active attack training, which was excellent. We, we did not do, because we had the taxes going on at the same time. We didn't do the actual gunshot just because we had people in the building. But it was great. It was great. We went around to each area to see, heaven forbid, there is a attack here at the library and what to do. One of the recommendations from the special agent for, only a security recommended that we also do training when it comes to a terrorist attack on the phone. They call it SWAP. So that's in the pipeline for the entire staff. For leadership line, it was the annual overnight in Nashville and it was, it was fantastic. We all had a good time, some more than others, but we all, we all survived and I know I behaved myself, so. I was asked to speak at Montgomery Ridge, a second grade, the seventh grade had a leadership class, which was fantastic. I got to speak with seven graders, seventh graders and kind of go on like a job interview, how it would work. And just give them some ideas on what they could do when they do go for a job interview or speak to their teacher. Or to, you know, when you're applying for college, speaking to their professor. So that was great. I had a really fun time doing that as well. And yes, like I said, we did have the security audit. The results, yes, they cannot reveal the results, but I will say that the library scored extremely high, which was nice to hear. Under projects and Eric is here. So the exterior was approved by the Merivale Design Board, correct?
Yes, nice Monday. Presented the Booker turn project to the downtown review board and it was approved. It's pretty good. Kind of opens up the following steps to add the whole building comment and so forth for this instruction. So I'm in good shape there. However, there was one item that did come up and they basically made our feeling conditional. They were concerned about the existing personnel doors that comes out of the current, that couldn't stay in that building there. And from a building code standpoint, I'm not so sure that there's anything that will prevent us from having that door there. Right now, as Summer and she luckily was able to get the photos printed out. But you can see the photo is actually the existing condition and obviously the drawing would be the future condition. And you can see right now that door is kind of protected by that book return. So any traffic that is out in that area, it wouldn't be impacting anyone that is exiting the building. The, in the future, since we are actually going to have the machinery at the edge of the building, at the edge of the glass. When we remove that existing book return, that door then becomes kind of a little bit more of a safety concern. So I told them that I would present to you, you know, those concerns and talk to you a little bit about that. We talked a little bit with the, with the review board about some options. In our, I guess, when we were going through the design process, it was kind of in our mind that that door was not going to be used, you know, living on a regular basis. That it was basically for egress, be used in an emergency. There wouldn't be any reason for traffic to be going in and out of, you know, that door. So it, you know, it didn't seem like that that was, you know, that wasn't necessarily a driver kind of the design. It was more of, let's, you know, make sure we have, you know, proper approach to where the drop off would be and some other things like that. So the one, one option for that door would be to put an alarm on the door, which basically as soon as you opened up the door, a bell, you know, our buzzer was, would sound just to alert not only the person leaving the building, but also, you know, who's in the building, that someone is using that door. But it probably also would be, because that'll be fairly close to where that book drop is. It would be audible probably to whoever would be at that book drop and we'd kind of warn them that, hey, the door is opening and someone's coming out. The other option probably would be to take that door and relocate it around the corner. And then have just a small piece of sidewalk kind of that came out to, to take anyone that came out of that door and be able to connect it into where you drive. Obviously, moving it around the corner takes away the safety concern of the traffic, the vehicular traffic. But it isn't, you know, really in the design right now. And so, you know, we aren't going to make a change like that until, you know, we talked to everyone about it and saw, got some feedback on, on the box.
Exactly what is the purpose of that door at this moment in time?
I believe it is just an egress door so that people that are in that area, if there's an emergency, they don't have to go all the way through the library to find another place to exit.
So nobody else uses it? It's not a public access.
No, it's not in now. I mean, we've gone, if we're looking out there, we'll open it ourselves.
It was, it was a way to get to the book drop on the outside if you had a problem with the outside.
And we had the.
It still needs to be there. I was wondering if you could add a door in the hallway, the new hall that you're creating, add a second door without a wire on it. It would only, so that if somebody went through, the iron would go out before they got to the second door. And then there would be a second alarm. So you know that if you're going through it, you're going through it for a reason.
That, that would be possible. I don't see any reason why.
Is it easier just to put the door to the side?
That seems like it.
Yeah, I mean, that seems like that's the easiest. Maybe it costs, well, I don't know.
So that door is already there.
That door, that door move, move when you.
It's stuck there.
No, that would.
It almost looks like it's the way to dig your napkin, move it inside, you're going to have.
This isn't coming out, that's going back.
Right. Gives you some integrity issues with the, with the existing brick that's, that's there. Because if it's moved to another part of the glass, the glass that's already there, it looks like you're just swapping one problem for another.
Basically, we would replace in that area where the.
Be originalized.
We would replace that with glass and then we would create the opening around the form.
Is there, is there any way maybe to integrate the existing door that's there into some kind of almost like, and it will give access for authorized personnel to get into where the book drop is going to be, where the machinery is. They could still keep people out otherwise, like coded or something like that?
So the only concern I have with, and I know this sounds crazy, but we're doing lots of safety stuff. But that's an outward facing door, right? So it will swing outwards, right?
Correct.
Okay, if a car is parked there, you've just blocked that. Is that correct? Like if a car was there, when people are trying to get out.
There's enough distance.
Is there enough distance for people to open that door?
Where the book drop is and the door that, that wouldn't be impacted. The only time that it would be impacted is if a car was parked in front of a car at the book drop, if that makes sense.
So a car could, so what I'm just saying is a car could in theory block an egress if it stays the way it is?
Yes, if there was a car parked in front of that.
Okay.
What would be the cost of moving the door around the corner? You'd have to replace the glass.
Yeah, I mean.
It looks like it's, it's an expensive, right?
It would be expensive, but you're, keep in mind also that we are all already replacing a decent portion of glass where the existing extension is coming along. So we have some, some work that's going to be done already on that. So if we incorporated relocating that door, I mean, as long as we did it now, as opposed to trying to do it on down the road. I think you'd see more cost effective that way. Is it, I mean, is an alarm cheaper? Yes, but I think, you know, in the long run, relocating the door, I think eliminates the issue that, that could potentially come.
And would you even need a walkway coming out that door if it's just for emergency purposes? Would you?
You typically have to have a section of sidewalk if it's an egress door. Yeah, and I think you would want that just from a maintenance standpoint, you know, moving forward. You're not encouraging traffic either, you know, into or out of that door. But I think just from being able to maintain that area well and, you know.
You're going to have to do some curb demo around the corner and pour some more concrete.
Well, I mean, we're already, because we're bringing that drive now, yeah, because we're bringing that drive up to the building. Most of that work would already be in, is already in the scope of work. The only difference would be from the very corner of the building, back to the door, you probably might have five foot. So you're, you're probably talking about a five foot by six foot piece of sidewalk. It could not be extensive at all.
And, and demoing the curb that's there.
That was, that's going to be already in, yeah, that's already in the project because that's, that's how.
I'm talking about the curb around the corner. There's a curb that, that big as a glass sits on.
Well, the door would sit on that. The threshold for that is the same.
Okay.
Yeah.
How much work is in the demo of the?
No, no.
Of the book drop itself, the current one, I didn't realize there was a lot of glass work involved there.
Yeah, well, if you, if you can kind of picture that, that square of the front of that book drop is going to be a hole at the current glass, at the current glass area. So when we put the new book drop in, it's a much smaller unit. It's, it's, you know, almost like an ATM. So the rest of that square for the book drop, we have, we are filling in that.
There isn't glass there now?
No, it's, it's a wall because that's, there's a room that has that book cover. So we would take out that drywall and frame the wall and the glass would go right back into that.
I'm just concerned that this project keeps getting bigger and bigger and more and more expensive. And a year has gone by and it keeps getting higher, yeah.
How, how often does it?
This has been driven by the city, right? Us trying to, the city, they said that we need to go with some type of compromise to make sure that we deal with safety. And that, putting that door to the side, to me, makes sense. I don't know what's the cost of the condition, but.
Yeah, I think relative to the overall budget, I don't think it's a major, you know, it would be a major impact on the overall.
I'm concerned with your point. If, I know it sounds, seems like a small probability, but any possibility of a car blocking that as an egress point seems like too, too great of a risk as far as that goes.
And I did speak with the purchasing agent and he was fine with whatever route we went, whether it be moving the door or the alarm. I think moving the door.
They haven't really, have they released the, the budget for bid?
No, so on Friday, it's going to go in front of the foundation. And if approved, then it'll go to the child.
And if we, we decide we're going to, you know, make that change, that's, from a drawing standpoint, is not difficult for us to do that. So what I would prefer to do is get that done and revise and get, basically substitute those drawings for what the purchasing agent has so that when it goes out to bid, we're not changing it once it goes out to bid.
Do I have a second? Make the motion that we move the door from the existing design to the side with all the necessary approvals.
A motion on the floor to move the door to the side. Do I have a second?
A second, then.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so.
Right, very good. We'll take care of it.
Thank you for explaining all that. Talking to us, we appreciate it.
Thanks, Eric. Okay, now we'll move on to reporting the Foundation Board. Bill Hope, glad to have you, Bill.
Yeah, it's great to be here. Just wanted to let them know that the Foundation has added a few new members. And we're looking to see how many more members might go forward. It's been, as most of you all have heard many times, the Foundation's been dormant for a good number of years. And we're trying to bring that back to life. As capital needs for the library continue, that's kind of the mission of the Foundation is to raise money in order to support some of those capital needs. So we're looking at some of those. We're excited to start, continue with the Friends. I think that's been not a, a working in the past. Friends have done a fantastic job and I think that the Foundation can benefit from, from working with them. There, as we begin to look at some of the capital projects, one of the things that I think would be beneficial for the trustees to hear is really sort of the basics of the campaign, like what that would mean. And if Stephanie and the rest of you are interested, I'd be happy to give like a little, a short workshop before my trustee meeting. That basically would talk about what is involved in campaign planning, how the steps would go, what you need in place in order to be successful. Just as a quick background, I spent 15 years in higher ed fundraising. My last job was at, as director of major gifts at Duke Medical Center. So then I was in fundraising for 15 years professionally and for the past 25 years, working on boards. And so I've, I've been in a lot of campaigns. So I think I can at least give you sort of an overview of what that looks like. Because I think there are some things that, that have to be in place in order for a campaign to be successful. And you never want a campaign that's not successful. As a matter of fact, you almost never hear of a campaign that's not successful because they don't announce campaigns. Which other 75%, 50 to 75% already funded. So you would never announce that you're in a campaign until you're already, you can already see the finish line. So it's things like that that I would love to kind of share with, with everyone if, if you're interested, so.
We are, we have, I think I've notified everybody that we would like to meet an hour ahead of time in our next meeting, our April meeting at 4:30. To have a workshop with you, if that's convenient for you and for the board. But we have found that if we can get this group scheduled, if it's just on this, a day that we've already got scheduled and maybe an hour or four or so. If that would work for you, then we'll just plan on doing that.
Yep, I've created a sample gift table. Basically, the, and I'll bring that next time. So you can see, just hypothetically, if we wanted a $3 million campaign, how many people, how many prospects and how many donors you would need in order to be successful at what level? So as you might imagine, to reach $3 million, you can't, you can't get that by asking for $10. You have to have a donor that's going to give you $500,000 or two of those. So in order to be successful, how many people we might need? So I'm going to kind of bring some of that information. So it'll, I think when you're done, you'll at least have a better idea of how campaign will look. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. All right. The four of the Friends of the Library meeting.
Alrighty, so we had an amazing sale earlier this month, setting a record at $18,000. Yep, and, and we figure our expenses are little or none because, for that, because all the books are donated. And I think Dick picked up 31 boxes from a church today. And the bookstore that's down the hill has agreed to donate what's left next week. So we'll be taking all of that in as well. So the supply chain doesn't seem to be ending anytime soon. eBay is still rolling along about 15% ahead of last year. If you haven't heard about the resurgence for VHS tapes, we, we have had an amazing amount of VHS tapes donated. But we also have been selling them, including Killer, what was it? Killer Clown's for $109 for a VHS tape. Yes, $85, $65. So we put some of the lower priced ones out and the ones Manny and I were looking at last week, the Killer Clown Posse.
Yeah.
That one sold yesterday and the Howling and another one. So it's, it's amazing what people will buy. But we've made at least 1,000, if not 2,000 on just VHS tapes since last month. We're going full speed ahead on the golden anniversary. We'll have our first displays available April 1st. And we'll be supplementing that on the 19th of April. We're meeting this week with Pelosi Culinary Program and their other deans about the gala. And I was just talking to Dawn about the Teachers Thank You event. And the celebration on the lawn is also moving forward for the June sale, Comic Con and the sale and the celebration all at the same time. So it should be a busy day. Parking will be at a premium, as it is with most of our stuff. We are, will be presenting a new slate of officers next, next week at our board meeting for the board to vote on. My term ends at the end of June, so I'm out. Somebody else is coming. Uh, I'm out. Somebody else is coming in by the, uh, but I'll still be there as past president and I'll still be running the, uh, the point on the Golden Anniversary stuff that will be finishing later in the year. That's it.
Thank you. Congratulations on that. Fifteen thousand, that was amazing. And, and you and I didn't miss it, the elevator, did we? We didn't get anybody stuck.
And you had candy too, which was great. Uh, can we, can the library or can, can the friends use the, the grass sections for parking if we need parking?
Well, we'll be having the tent out there and we'll have.
The far back. We own that, that far back lot.
Uh, that would have to go through the city. That's, that's the city.
No, it's ours.
We, we had to get approval when it came to the, the tent as well, uh, through the city. So you're asking for, for people to park on the grass?
The vet permit, so that's different than I would think than parking. But it'd still be nice to have.
I don't know how they would park on the, you'd have to.
Yeah, you'd have to go.
Go over the.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have, especially if they're vacationing the lawn.
There's an pickup truck.
Yes.
But we also talked about, you know, even if we got a couple of vans to shuttle people from Midland Plaza, I mean, it's gonna be busy.
Well, what about parking across the street? Yeah, the parking garages across the bridge and, and highlighting folks to walk over, maybe could add signage at the end of the bridge. Maybe there's surface lawn and the two other parking lot.
Yeah, I think, uh, there was indicated that there was a additional parking signs that are around here.
And you're in like the farmer's market. I see tons of, I walk and I see tons of people walk back and forth.
Right.
Any other questions for Dee or anything? Okay, uh, Liz is joining us, uh, virtually. So, uh, report of the, uh, Cooley River Regional Library, Liz Shree.
Hold on, I can't hear you, Liz.
Are you muted, Liz? But, no, there you go.
Can you hear me now?
Ah, yes.
Okay, good. I fixed it on. I don't know why it does that sometimes on my end, but here we go. Cause probably cause I switched from Teams to Zoom, who knows? Um, but glad it worked. Uh, so I'm really glad to hear that you all enjoyed the space planning workshop with David Benjemurray. Um, and I heard it went really well, so I'm really glad that that was, that was a good, uh, workshop. We had lots of positive comments on that. Um, and it's always something that people request, um, to kind of, even, even if you just take away getting a different idea of, of moving things around a little bit, you know, it's much more than that, but, but I'm glad you all enjoyed it. Um, and we're, we're glad to have it, uh, and provide that. Um, we have library marketing, um, and social media, which is always another big, uh, request that we get coming up on May the fourteenth. That will be a hybrid, uh, workshop that we're offering, um, for library staff and trustees if we would like to come. Um, we're reminding our libraries about the third quarter report that is due to Nikki on April the twelfth. And also tech grant spending is coming to an end. And so, um, we're, we're begging everybody to get invoices and everything in by April thirtieth. Um, again, as, at our monthly report last, uh, month, reviewing the board list for upcoming vacancies, which you all do well with always. Um, also reminding our folks about the Libris Connect Us All, um, Tennessee Library Association Twenty Twenty Four Conference coming up in Franklin in April. Um, as well as encouraging board members to continue to pursue trustee certification and of course, working on, uh, budgeting. So that's, that's where we are mainly. Um, it's spring and everybody's got budget fever and, so, um, that's, that's what I have to report. And, um, thanks for letting me be with you all, uh, this evening virtually. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Liz. Okay, uh, let's move on to the committee updates. Um, I have, as far as long range planning is concerned, uh, again, next month at four thirty, we'll be getting through some of that process with the, uh, bill and the foundation. I've also asked Manny to meet with the staff to assess immediate, um, space needs and to take the information that we have compiled in, in each of the committees that we've worked on with this long range plan, take all of that information to the staff to evaluate, to look at, to give us feedback on, um, to see what some next steps are. Um, so that we can continue moving forward with this long range plan. Uh, because what we have right now is not enough for the foundation to take out to the community. We need as much detail as we can about how this, um, expansion and this, this renovation is going to help the community. What's it going to do for our community and each of our patrons? So we've still got some work to do, which is okay because the foundation has some work to do as well. So this will give all of us time. But I have asked Manny to do that as far as, um, space, immediate space needs are concerned. And, uh, looking at the, um, information that we brought back from, uh, the news, um, spend some time with the staff on that. Does anybody else have any other committee updates or anything that you want to add? Okay, uh, next item is the nominating committee appointments. Uh, in June, uh, we will elect a, a chairman, a vice chairman and a secretary. So I've asked Tim and Andy, Andy, if you would serve, or Manny asked maybe, it wasn't, wasn't me. If you would serve on a, a nominating committee to, uh, come forward with a slate of officers. If you would think that. Does anybody else want to volunteer for that committee? Be glad to have three people on. Okay, thank you, though.
I would suggest that, that the two nominees, uh, select someone else. The conversation question should have.
Do you want to do that right now?
No.
No, okay.
Your party gift. Your party gift.
All right, uh, old business, uh, trustee bylaws policy. You have, you, you received a, uh, bylaws policy in your packet, but you also have a new one, um, at your desk with some changes that after Liz, we were only online. I just updated it in the actual drive.
When you do? I'm just curious, did you print this yesterday? Okay.
Yeah. And the, um, suggested changes was in two point three, and Liz looked through this in the application as well. And our old policy, the two point three says, if a member ceases to reside in Blount County, that member shall be removed from the board. Three unexcused absences within one fiscal year shall terminate board appointment. And Liz suggested we s- Manny, did you come to me?
Uh, summer show with Liz, yeah.
It was via email, um, and she suggested what I put in there after speaking with Manny, what I changed it to, which you don't have it in front of me, but, um, that as the board, you, um, since, let me pull up the email that Liz, unless Liz.
I can just tell you, yeah. So I see, this isn't a lot of, uh, bylaws that I've seen before, um, that we had and I, it was probably the practice before, but I just, and I, I'm not an attorney, so if you want to run this pastor county attorney, feel free. But I think it would be cleaner, um, because the board really doesn't have the appointing authority to either appoint or remove members. Um, I think it would probably be better to, um, uh, say that you will, um, ask, uh, that member to resign as opposed to terminating their appointment, just because I don't, the board itself doesn't really have the legal, um, authority to, to terminate or appoint, because your, your funding bodies, your appointing bodies. So, uh, it, it just, um, and, and I think it's good to have a letter of resignation from someone, you know, they, a lot of times people, things come up and they just can't, they just can't serve anymore and that's fine, you know? But, um, if you just have that resignation letter, you can certainly take that to the funding body and say, well, you know, they, they can no longer serve and we need to fulfill this vacancy. So it's just a cleaner process. But asking for resignation is what I would recommend.
It's kind of soft and zit a little bit.
Do we need to be more specific that it actually includes the language that it's like the nominating body will be the one to remove or replace or whatever? Is that, is that something like, cause I'm thinking of the situation where we ask someone to resign and they don't. And then what happens next? Like, do we need to outline that or not? Like?
I, I would think at that point, I mean, I can't imagine anybody's gonna be so willful that they're gonna say, uh, I'm gonna miss all the meetings I want and by George, I'm not going, I'm not going off the board. Uh, you know, I, I don't know that. It may be something that, it may be a bridge that we cross when we get there. I, I think that at a certain point, that, you know, if we have the language that says there will be the three unexcused absences and that board member will be, um, you know, will be asked to, asked to resign from the board, I think probably gets us to where we, where we need, need to be. And I think if we had to do an amendment at some point or an amendment to it, we could probably do that at a, at either a called meeting or at a regular meeting and just kind of put it through the, through the regular, the regular process itself.
Do we have to explain what an excused absence is?
Well, yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't wonder that the same, the same thing and.
Why, why do we even have to have the word unexcused in there? Can we not just say three absences? Consecutive?
For most boards, I think that the unexcused is, you know, kind of the basic, people just don't show up. People just stop showing up. You know, there was no effort made to, you know, indicate, I'm so sorry, this is an emergency. Even after the fact, you know, something happened, something came up. I think that's usually the intention from the bylaws that I see is, is that the intended purpose of unexcused.
It's a three absences without notice. Which would be unexcused.
Yeah, cause I, you know, somebody got, you know, had some, something befallen that, you know, kind of through no fault of their own, that's probably different than just not showing up.
Yeah. Three absences.
You want to say chronic absent, chronic absence or?
Oh, we need to have a number.
Yeah, I think three without notice. I, I like, I think that, I think that, that, that covers, right.
Three absences without notice.
Right.
Yeah.
That's very typical from what I see of, of different.
See, I'm unexcused. Three absences without notice.
Yeah, right.
And, and the notification is, uh, calling the chairperson.
Or, or, uh, I think the director.
Email.
Yeah, just email the group. Yeah. Paul Logan.
I think it should be the chairperson, not that, we shouldn't be calling Manny.
Or contacting, yeah, email or calling. Yeah.
Yeah.
What, what's happening with the being a wifi or, or being?
I'm glad you brought that up. I did consult with the lawyer and he said, um, right after COVID happened, there were some, um, activity, uh, at the state level to try to get that so that groups could use that, but he said that didn't go anywhere. So we cannot, uh, based on his information, we cannot do. Now, you can, you can remote in and, and, and watch and all that, but as far as voting is concerned, yeah, you have to have a quorum present and you, you don't vote.
Does that become an, if you are remote, is that an unexcused absence?
No, to me that wouldn't be.
No, cause I think it's, I, I, I just think you're just probably able to vote, but, but it doesn't, then it would be, I think it would only be an issue if you didn't have a quorum.
If you didn't have a quorum.
And then, you know, otherwise, I mean, and I, cause I think if somebody, if you're, if you're sick and you can zoom, that's probably works, probably works best anyway.
So then the, if we're, and I don't want to move from two point three until we're ready, but then two point six point three, remote participation. It does say that, um, under limited circumstances, trustee is unavailable to, to be physically at a board meeting. May participate in the meeting via communication devices provided that a physical form. It doesn't say that they're not allowed to vote and maybe we need to add that language to that.
I think, I think that's, I think that's probably a good amendment or a good change to make is they may.
Attend, but.
Maybe, uh, may attend but not participate or may be present at the meeting, but unable to vote.
Do you want them to be able to, um, have some input and make comments?
Because there was the meeting a couple of months ago that Logan and I were, were both, both out and both on Zoom and were, um, that, you know, and I think that worked well. We couldn't vote.
Yeah. So they may participate in the meeting, but cannot, but, but cannot, but, yeah.
I think that's, I think that's probably the best way to kind of, um, put that out.
Those, those have to be then transferred over to this application as well.
Yes, and that's, that's exactly right. Will we, um, do I have a motion that we approve bylaws with the changes that we discussed? Some news?
And I'll, I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Well, how many, how many changes are we making and what are the?
Just that, that's the one. Cause now we're down here, we're having. In two point three and then two point six.
You're talking about the set location.
Yeah. Okay, I'm good. Okay, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And some of those changes that we just discussed, um, we've never had a trustee application and I was just looking at some of the other websites a couple of months ago and gave that to Manny and asked him to sort of play that out a little bit just to give us information when we have someone new that comes on the board. I think this is important to kind of see. So, I don't know if you had a chance to look at that or not, but the changes that we made as far as the three unexcused absences, we'll make those same, that same wording on the application. Um, are there any other suggestions, um, for that, have attention?
I have a couple of questions. Go ahead.
Uh, so the first thing is I don't, is it actually an application?
It's more, it's more of an information. I, I, but it could be an application.
It's almost, it, it almost needs, it's almost like a recommendation form or a request for recommendation or, it's, I'm kind of getting hung up on it. It's the, I'm kind of getting hung up on it, cause the way the nominating and the political process side of it works, that's all separate from this, right?
We we have. Go ahead, Sandy. We have, we submit, we don't select, we submit names or whatever information we have. To the three governing bodies, so if we have two people that are interested in. One position, I think it it would be nice to have information to give to those governing bodies. Uh just just to have, cause they knew the choose and we do not choose.
The plan to have this on, you you mentioned, you saw it on another website about the plan.
I don't know that we want to do that uh or just have it available, you know, just say this application is available.
That's what I would recommend, yeah, just from a staff perspective. We don't want it to get lost, we don't like, so, yeah, knowing the process that takes to get on.
And and you all are recruiting hopefully the people to do this, so this will just be something for you. As you're recruiting people to hand them an application or not an application, but information, maybe that's what we need to target.
Cause it's almost been, I like it, like a C V rather than a, rather than a job app application.
In in the past, when we made nominations to the different funding bodies, we had to give them information on the person, so this is this.
The my only suggestion is is like asking, and I may have, I may overlook this, but asking them to submit a resume or C V with this. I think that's beneficial for the the funding bodies to vote on when they see it.
Well, and a lot of times when we have, when we have nominations for committees, they will send us. A resume of that person to say, you know, this is why this person's qualified for planning commission or for.
I know when I joined this board. I don't know, four years ago, I, they used to utilize my resume, so I think just having that in the application, good.
Just like, I wondered why we we left off what the person does. There's no, there's no information as far as what they do for their living.
They do know.
Well, I think the C V, their resume, it's their purpose, you know, having to have them fill it out again, you know. It'd be easy.
If they're, if they're asked, here's your question.
Yeah.
That's fine. So so Stephanie, uh we would be responsible for giving the potential applicant or. Potential member uh document to put out and bring back to.
Well, the question is, do we wanna use those this year, um you know, we're re- recruiting two candidates right now. Uh is this something we wanna use this year or do we delay it to next year, I mean, that's up to you all.
For your replacement, would you like to hand them? I think it would be, I re- I remember like going to lunch with Casey and and um. Doctor Schibell and like them having to get to know me, you know, it it this would be helpful, I think, you know.
Why not, I could see her, yeah, start using her.
Yeah.
Who are the stakeholders that you refer to? You say the library stakeholders and the entire community.
Well, Manny.
Foundation, friends.
Okay.
Yeah.
City.
I mean Manny, I would think this would be extremely beneficial too for you, right? From a standpoint of getting to know your board members and, you know, or potential board members.
Well, and we've had this um discussion of. Should we not have something about all of us on?
Yeah.
You know, on the website of, you know, well, this is. Cindy Thompson, this is her qualifications for being on this board, or this is her, you know, should we not have something? That we can. Why not?
Yeah, I think that we are, we did talk about listing our pictures and so, so look for the I D B, we have all the board members listed on our website and their emails. To be able to contact them, we have an email address for us to utilize, I don't, I don't see why not, list our photos and, yeah.
Because like on the Black County website, the commissioners are on there with our contact information and our email addresses and. And not that our qualifications are on there, but they're on a.
Just a way to contact, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I I see myself as in this role as a public servant and I think the public should be able to get a hold of me, at least in, at least as as an email. So I I'm okay, I'm from that side.
But Amy, wow, what what is your objection to that, Amy? I'm just curious.
A friend of mine is the chair of the Oak Ridge Library. They have nothing but trouble in Oak Ridge, it's incredible and. Putting that information upon a screen up where it's where it's available for everybody in their community has created real big problems.
Like, and then their email addresses or, we already have one, they email us already. And they should.
Because you're a public servant.
Tune into to their board meetings.
Then, you know, maybe it's not the right folks on the board, I mean, I.
It's the community, it's not the board members.
I've I've got a few K D emails on my personally, book banners and other things, I don't know how they got my email. But that's just, I guess it's listed somewhere.
Well, and I don't mind, I don't mind having that group board meeting either, because that to me, that would, that means we all get that.
Yeah.
They like that.
I love it, and listing their names, I mean, it'd be nice for them to know who they're addressing and who they're speaking to, you know, I I think that's fair. I'm not saying put our cell phones out there.
I guess, yeah, I I said, I come from the tech background, so if somebody's not framing you in an email, then you're just not in there, right? This is kind of part of the course.
Um, one thing that I, uh looking at now and I probably must say, I see is missing. Is, you know, we have to have a certain makeup of male female on this board. We don't have that on here, we don't have race on here, um and I think that's important.
You don't say, at least six, you could only have six, only one, you know, one type, male, female, six.
But how do we know, like, who's filling out the application? You know?
Oh, whether they're male or female?
Yeah, or their race or, you know. Yes.
Does that run into?
Well, I mean, that that gets, that gets a little thorny and then I, and then, but also it it. Partly, if you've got a designated nominating committee for it. For these particular positions that are open, then they've got certain parameters that they've got to to work through. And I, and I think one of the things that we entrust them with that, and we entrust them with knowing. These are the things that we need to be looking for, because, you know. I think right fit beats a lot of box ticking.
We do have to have.
And I, right, exactly, but but and I think that, you know, these three guys, when they, when they, when they go, do they or do their stuff.
Or to be done?
Yeah. That's fine, I did, are you okay with that?
They always ask. But you're right.
Um, if the board's okay with the changes, or do you want me to, do you want it presented at the next board meeting, or do you wanna?
I think, I mean, this is the first time we've talked about it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, I think. Till April maybe.
All right, so that's new bi- new business.
Um Manny, we didn't have a financial report last month, we do wanna go against right now, please do it.
Should be a financial report every month in your package.
Um, what is it, you guys, we are tracking very well. Um, our revenues are seemingly inflated because when our stakeholders come in, it bumps our. Percentages collected of revenues up substantially, um and all of our um stakeholders, the city and the county have, of course, paid. So we're at our seventy five percent pretty much. Um, the library generated revenues are extremely high because this year we have a good interest rate. And so if you look at our revenue sheet, which should be the after the narrative. The next one, our revenue sheet looks like that. Um, you can see that the third line, the interest earned, um we're gonna be making fifty that, we're. Or, you know, it was fifty thousand when I did this report. Yeah, fifty thousand when I did this report, it's fifty eight right now, as of today, so um that's really. I mean, it it is wonderful news, what that means is that is money that will go into our fund balance, so the next time that we have a large capital project. That there is um funding available for that, so and the. The library's public funded or the fund balance is what is used for things like our ceiling or a roof repair. Um, other than that, there is nothing to, you know, um we are tracking very well, um. What is it, our operating expendant uh expenditures and um personnel? So sorry, it looks like the operations, the final tally, the final line got cut, so sorry about that. Um, what is it, uh, but we are operating at. Sixty three percent, um where we're, you know, at the time of this report, we needed to be around the sixty five percent. Um, a lot of that is because our maintenance is now in one line item and um that's been kind of taken out in semi annual chunks. So um when that gets taken out again, it'll probably be closer to June now when that's taken out. Um, you'll see a sudden drop, so, and that's a total of, so if you look at our expense or our operations. Line, you look at line three nine nine, other contracted services, that's where our um maintenance expenses come out of. And that's going over to general services, so you'll see zero, 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 and then come November, a hundred and sixty five thousand. And change was paid out, and so that'll be happening again, um anytime you see um. Red, it means that, you know, we needed to make an adjustment, and so we do, um. Yeah, everything's tracking pretty well, um the proposed operations budget has been submitted. Um, for next year, it has stayed evene- even, so. You go to our revenue sheet, our our narrative again. What we are asking for in terms of operating expenses is at eight hundred seventy seven thousand, um one hundred. Twenty three dollars and seventy eight cents, we've just held it the same, so um the salaries and benefits are being calculated. By the finance department, they get shared with us after the fact, and then we just double check to make sure that it looks right to us.
So that, would that include a raise?
We have not heard that yet right now, what, usually what they do is they hear from all the departments to hear what all they ask.
I wouldn't count on it. I wouldn't count on it this year.
But we always hope.
The teachers are always hopeful, but. I would, yeah, you don't think that two or three percent raise?
Um, we got, I, we got a large one, pretty large class.
So typically what happens is the the finance department gets what all the departments of the county needs. And then they work their numbers and then they see what is possible and then they take that to. Um, but we don't ever go into a budget cycle assuming that they will, that we will get a cost of living or anything, so. Yes.
Library fees.
Yes.
Know something about that, how that, how that.
Okay, um what is it? Okay, library fees are where you'll get our hotspots, um our hotspot income or revenue stream. There we go, okay, and um what is it, uh, we're looking at. Finds, lost materials, um hotspots. So.
So any any issue, any issue showing up in terms of finds, have we, we've definitely defined, right?
We have.
And how that works, kind of issues, uh.
There were, there were some process bumps that we had to get over when we turned finds back on. Uh, what is it, our integrated library system, our card catalog, the one, the database and the. The application that manages all our library accounts, um it's retro. Uh graded all the way back, and so we've had to do some um. Adjustments and some cleanups, however, I believe we are on the other side of that. The customer service issues have been dealt with um swiftly and positively, I don't remember there being. You know, as soon as we were made aware of the issue, we would start, we started adjusting our processes. And we were always talking with the patrons to say, hey, if you've got this issue, so Manny and Summer, and Summer was incredible, because this was during the interim. Period, um and I'm sure Cynthia was involved in it earlier, cause it was, yeah, so I think we're on the right side of that now and things are, yeah.
Are are folks returning their books, cause I, it's hard for me to see with library fees, if you're saying it's wifi, hotspots, et cetera. Um, so it's hard to, like, for budgeting purposes, I mean, that's, you know.
So I would say that, um, so I can definitely find that out. Being the the financial person, I'm just watching how it tracks, um that is not, it is a little bit below. Um, the the percentage where we would quote unquote hope, which is the sixty five point. Sixty five point three eight percent, um but it's not enough where it's shocking and because our, in my. Uh pers- from my perspective, that interest earned is covering so much, so. And in terms of overall budget, we're tracking well, now, if I'm looking at that one line item, I could run a few reports. And I can see uh how. How many like overdue items we have out and how long they've been out, that kind of thing, um. We are in the process that we've got a new um pageant services manager and um she is getting to learn the system. As well as she'll start tidying up a lot of accounts, a lot of our outstanding debt. Um, is very old, and so um one could look at that data and say, you know what? Actually, you know, yes, we have it on our books that ten years ago, this person owed us three hundred dollars.
Don't you write it off at some point?
Exactly, and that's what we need to do, so um what is it, uh, we're getting to that, we're making those. Those inroads, we do have a practice that, um. After so much time of inactivity, it's supposed to be um. Removed, the the account is, we're just double checking to make sure that that's actually taking place, so.
So yeah, I'm, I am more interested in it, that makes sense.
Okay.
Um, I am more interested in. When the board voted to reinstate fines, it was, it was because the library. It was, it was because the librarians are saying folks are not returning their books. I'm more interested that's actually happening.
I think we can look into that and and report it in the next.
Any other questions, Dr.? Oh, kind of moved around there. Uh, under our business, the next item is public meeting rooms policy. Do I have a motion that we accepted a policy with? Let me get a motion in a second, then we'll call, cuz there are, there is some changes, they want some clarification from the board. Uh, do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
In a second?
Okay.
Okay, and now discussion.
So at the last meeting under public meeting rooms, there were some suggestions made as far as uh adding bullet points under public meeting rooms, there was also a suggestion, excuse me, of a Q R code, there was also a suggestion of cleaning it up, cleaning the language up. But we never had a definitive answer. So before we move forward, we'd like to ask the board, where would you like to go? You want the Q R code, with bullet points, or a cleaner, briefer summary?
Well, the QR code is nice, I just utilize it when I was reading on my computer, but it's good.
So do you want all three, or you want all three?
I think they want everything that's in there.
All right, all right, bullet points, well, clean it out, then Q R.
And the three, I mean, it's, it's one of those things that because of it's almost better to have all this so that people will know exactly. I mean, there won't be anything, well, didn't see that it said that, you know, and.
Sorry, my only, one of my suggestions is re- re- the page for cleanup and repairs to the next page. And maybe number of the pages too.
So we like the way it looks as it is right now with the statement in there, use of the public meeting rooms, that statement and the Q R code. Yeah. Okay, all in favor?
Oh, wait, 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 wait. Um, the common spaces and food services? She's she's not catering anymore, right? Did I, did I not read that?
She is not, she's still offering coffee service and.
This says coffee, teas, scones, and lunchboxes.
Right, and I thought we had taken that out last time.
But no, she she's still doing the coffee, tea, and scone, she's still doing that.
But not the lunchboxes, this says and lunchboxes.
So if it's a small, and if it's a small group, she's able to do the lunchboxes. She was running into issues where it was a large, it was a people, like a.
Then there probably needs to be put in there. A limit of how many people.
And we wanna, how about going the other way and generalizing it and saying some catering services offers limited catering.
Limited catering.
I don't see what we might.
Something.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree to him.
Yes.
I like the not listing it because if it changes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know?
What, what was the reason why we would not include the to the prices of the room rules? Another reason I've gotten basically changed in the policy.
Oh, it is so that we have flexibility and it doesn't require a board meeting or a special call meeting. So if we, if if we have to respond to another societal event.
Yeah.
Then we have the flexibility to do that before a board meeting, even though like, you know, yeah. Or if we notice that maybe all of a sudden we're getting mad packed and we're like, hey, there's such a mad demand, we should have bumped this up ten dollars, you know.
Well, based on the rental rates on the financial report, maybe we should. Thank you, I was, I forgot.
So the catering change. So we got a motion in a second, including the the change in wording on the, in about catering. Uh, limited catering or whatever, someone has there. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Give your votes. Thank you. All right. All right, new business, friends funding requests, uh, lactation pod.
So the origin behind this was about a year ago, less than a year ago. Uh, the friends proposed a uh wish list for the various departments. And our youth services department, part of her, a wish list was a lactation pod. Um, didn't know much about lactation, didn't know. Um, I was at a tour of Denzo, and they had one for their employees, and I I I needed to see it. Didn't understand the whole concept, uh, now I do.
Never even heard of it, so.
Which I not.
Never even heard of it, so.
I actually had not heard of it until going through airports internationally, you know, last, like, this past week.
There you go, yeah.
And we have one in, we have one at McGee Tyson now.
That's a, yeah.
But there's all, but in Dublin, there were eight or ten.
Well, that that, I'm glad you brought that up because we would actually be the first if approved for the entire public, cuz the one at McGee Tyson is beyond security.
Inside, right.
Denzo's for their employees, Amazon is for their employees. This one here would be in the youth services department, it would be uh accessible um for everyone to, you know, if someone's in a wheelchair, it'd be accessibility to get in there. So we would be the first in Blount County, which is always nice to be either the first in Tennessee or Blount County to have a lactation pod. They're always locked, there was a question, can someone just waltz in there? No, they they are locked. The the uh youth services staff would have the code. Uh, you can also access it on your app, so if you have an electric car and you need to cha- if you need to charge it, either a Tesla or or whatnot, there's apps where you can find the location for the charging stations. So it's the same thing with a lactation pod. You would find the nearest one, and uh our sales rep did mention there was someone looking in the target parking lot for one. I don't know where else they would try to find one around here.
They try to find them all the time.
So there we go, yeah. Company is called Mama Bot, and um you're seeing them pop up in libraries. Um, a couple recently in Massachusetts now that they they have. Again, we'd be the first, this would be if approved, per- purchased by the friends, so the friends would purchase the lactation pod.
How much would it be?
What's this number?
How much?
So altogether, we've thirty-two thousand dollars, that includes a five-year. Let me get the exact language, a five-year service plan, yeah.
And, and I never asked them, you're trying out which one, um.
Yeah, so we're gonna go with the XL, because if someone's in a wheelchair, they'll be able to access it.
Manny, these still broken down, right?
That is correct, so there would be, we're not putting it together, they have installers that come on pallets, and then they would assemble it in about four hours.
Where, where's it going?
It's gonna go into the youth services and set uh location, children's room, I should say. Uh, they already have it uh marked off with uh white tape. Uh, it will be a clear view of the children's room. So they will see, there's a question on what happens if a man tried to walk, they're gonna be watching, yeah. And we could do it so they either have a code, or youth services could have the key, so they'd be the ones unlocking it.
Camera coverage to the door?
Yes.
Okay.
So there is a fisheye right above it, and I know another question was make sure there's no cameras inside. There won't be no cameras inside, but we will add a board up to it, but.
I mean, it's, 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 yeah, I can't look inside, bro.
Yeah.
That's the door, though.
I've utilized one in the Atlanta airport, um, it was, I and I have breastfed in youth services before, um, out in public. Um, it's kind of what you have to do right now, or you go sit in the bathroom and occupy the bathroom, you know, and that's unventary. Um, I think it's great, they're for staff, it's a wonderful asset uh for your staff, for the community. Um, it's also hard sometimes to breastfeed when there's other kids around screaming and, you know, there's a lot of sin. People can also use this as a sensory pod for going in quiet or, you know. Um, my question is, is who will the county um maintenance and clean it daily? Um, cuz there, you typically, like the one in Atlanta was this XL pod that you're talking about. There's a, there was a trash can in there, and then, um, cuz there was also a changing area for people to change their, um, the kids diapers in there.
Yeah.
And so just, that's one thing I thought of.
So we thought about a diaper genie?
Yeah.
For the, for the diapers, for the pampers.
Mm-hmm.
But also staff would be along, working with a custodian during the, during the day, would be going in there.
Yeah.
Wiping it down, uh, disinfecting.
They had um hand sanitizer and wipes like on it, like where you just pull it out and they have you to clean up behind yourself. And I mean, it was clean, but it will need to be moth, I mean moth occasionally, or probably daily.
Yeah.
I think it's fabulous, and I appreciate it because everywhere I go, I mean, when you, uh, every three hours, you have to pump or breastfeed. And so it's like a hassle to try to find somewhere to be. Thank you.
Who's gonna write, do the write-up on the rules on this?
What is that again?
Who's gonna do the write-up on the rules?
I'll work with Chelsea, but also the sales rep from uh Mama Bot. I had brought that question up via email, and they already have like a boilerplate type of set of rules that we can.
Is there time limit in there so that more than one person can, uh, uh, obviously it's a one person?
So you could have either thirty minutes, you could have it sixty minutes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't have any longer, but definitely thirty and sixty. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, looking at the two different documents that were provided, there's a little bit of a disconnect. I'm trying to come up with thirty-two grand compared to their brochure. And are we getting the graphics, are we doing the extra add-ons, like, we'd be kind of nice to see it break down a little bit, um.
So it would be the XL pod.
Okay.
Plus the shipping and handling, plus the professional installations. And then the four thousand dollars would be the base um base service plan for five years. Uh, we would do that in-house as far as, again, it's just gonna have the Friends of the Library logo on it. This is a purchase by the Friends of the Libraries.
And where the supplies and then gain.
We're, we're not, we're not gonna have any of the, I you talking about the.
Yeah.
With, oh, we'll, we'll have that, I thought you meant.
The pumps and the.
Yeah, we're not gonna be offering the pumps, we're not like that, we'll, we are, yeah, well, that is, that is one of the services they offer, or not.
Yeah, the. Yeah. Not a parent. Yeah.
Well, yeah.
And there's not another private room we're blocking, we have a facility.
Not unless you want the family restroom, but it's probably not the most investment.
But it's cheaper to put this unit on.
That was one of my questions, yeah, is there existing pockets with a plug and a light?
Plug and light, but I didn't know.
We had to provide a plug.
You mean our, do we have a lactation room already?
Yeah, so we're just a space that could easily become a lactation space, cheaper than thirty-two thousand.
The youth and children's room would need to be their, their closet where they keep all their equipment, all the restroom. I think that's it.
It's gonna be twenty-three and the rest of it is installation and supplies.
So, so this, this is the population of the guys. Uh, it's just friends.
Yeah.
Friend, friends should probably discuss whether they find this uh be appropriate, if they have buy-in, if they have the money. If you listen, and I call the teacher.
Angie and I broke the ice at our last board meeting, telling them that this was going to come. And didn't give them the exact figure, but we told them it was up over twenty.
What the positive was received?
I think actually the room was a little quiet, so maybe they need a little time to think about it. But what I've heard, the feedback I've heard from other board members is um all a bit positive. I think it's a great opportunity, you know, I mean, if you think about all the young mamas that are here with their babies and that kind of thing, I mean, I would have loved to have something like that twenty-six years ago when I had my baby.
Is there a warrant, you know, this thing?
Yes.
Yes, there is, yeah.
Like a twenty years?
No, it's not a twenty-year warranty, no. The one year.
Yeah.
I mean, one year, what, what are the breaks?
Last year, right?
We got the five years.
And we got, and we'll have the five-year service plan.
Service plan for five years, yeah, that's been paid for.
I make a motion, I make a motion that we uh approve this and kind of to friends.
Second.
Just, uh, just a random question, um, do we want to consider, do we need to vote first or?
Have that.
She asked it was random.
Discussion.
Question.
We got a first and a second, yeah.
Okay, um, random question is, is this looking long-term? If we go for this option for here and now, do we need to consider this again, look at the basement? Or do we wanna build out a separate space in the basement, like just ourselves?
Right.
Well, we can definitely add that to our long-term plan.
I think that's right, I would like to say that um it's definitely a consideration, it should not be built in the bathroom. It needs to be a separate space without a toilet.
Separate.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, this thing's movable.
I have a recommendation too, the Tennessee State Museum, the archives in Nashville by the Capitol, they have a great one to to pack with them, uh, built in. Um, I utilize it over in Nashville, so something, there, there are folks that are doing this, the state Capitol has um, has one on every floor now in Legislative Plaza. Um, so it's definitely a great trend and great asset, but there are many things to look at for our, our campaign, so you know, and.
Okay, uh, any other questions? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Both are here, thank you. Okay, um, second friends funding request is newspaper state in reference, ready?
So Kathleen's not here to discuss that this evening, but this is one of the ways we're trying to clean up the various, uh, as I said, neighborhoods, um, or areas in the library. Currently, the the newspapers stand on these large, black, really old school, um, hard to see, they're really tall. For someone like me, it's pretty tall. What we're trying to do is eventually, and our goal is to clean that whole area up, to remove all the stands that hold those magazines, to have them on mobile show. So unfortunately, they don't have one for newspapers. Uh, but we did, well, Kathleen did her homework and found something that um that would fit the bill for adult services. So if approved, uh, the newspapers would be going into this new stand. And then I would put in a maintenance ticket for uh maintenance or or me, just for moving that Shelby unit that holds newspapers right now, so start cleaning that area up.
Question I have on that is, what, last time I spoke with them, um, like the print periodicals and newspapers seem to fluctuate wildly between what they even get invisible. Is this something, is this a solution that can be modular so that we could either shrink it or expand it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, that's up to the the manager of adult services to um keep an eye on that. Yeah, that's up to the, the manager of adult services to, um, keep an eye on that because it does, it fluctuates.
Do I have a motion to approve this? Uh, moving this on to the friends?
Make a motion.
I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Staff development half day on, uh, May twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-four.
So I'd like to do staff development day twice a year. Uh, the one in the fall is usually an entire workday. Eventually I'd like to have that happen, um, in the spring as well. We had such a positive experience with active attack, part one and part two. Um, this time we would have, uh, Wendy Wong from, uh, United Way speak about, uh, various, uh, community resources. Here in Blunt County as well as explain Alice. Um, I wanna do something a little different because we always have it at the library. I wanna kind of take, take it on the road. And this is kind of what I've seen during my time in leadership Blunt, going to various, uh, buildings in the county. So this time, uh, we would have the staff development day in the basement at the Blunt Partnership. What I'd lo- also like to do is have someone from the partnership speak to the staff for about an hour to explain who they are, you know?
Where?
That's what, you want it longer or? Well, and also field questions. So explain, you know, who they are, are they really a chamber of commerce? What do they do? Um, and I have some other ideas for other locations, but. It's beneficial.
How many employees do you have that are going, all of them?
All of them, yeah. I mean, usually some, if they have a doctor appointment, they. Their excuse.
You have a problem? With any, with responsibility of having a meeting for all employees somewhere else? From an insurance standpoint, from any kind of a standpoint? Are you responsible for their driving over there to that meeting then? Are you?
The only way we would be, one was. Yes.
Shouldn't be.
We, we get off to four thirty in the morning before they come here.
Yeah.
And they're.
So shouldn't be, yeah.
But they're being paid to go there.
Yeah, we all do that.
Yeah, it's no different than if we go to the losers and Louisville or go to a meeting down in Townsend or a speaking event at, uh, the country club in. It's about Coeur d'Albemarle, yeah, or the Hilton. It would be on me if I was like having road rage and purposely sides wiping cars, then yes, but just traveling to. Or we're going to Franklin, Tennessee for TN LA.
Teachers do it all the time. I do it, I do it every in-service, yeah. We go, we go to our school in the morning and have our meetings or whatever. And then we'll come to the learning lab or we go to central office or we go wherever. And we do it all the time. It's not, I mean, I've never even thought about. And I had a friend that had a wreck one time, going from one place to another, her own thoughts.
A teacher killed. On bus.
But that was on a field trip.
Yeah.
That was different.
That was different.
Yeah.
You're not putting all these library employees in a bus and taking them somewhere. If you were gonna do that, that would be different.
No, we were asking them to go individually.
No, we do it all the time.
Even as most of those.
Company employees, I do it all the time.
Even as students, travel with them.
I even went to Knoxville. Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, I don't see that that's a.
So do I have a motion? Uh, do I have a motion that we approve the staff development half day on the twenty-ninth of May and the library will open at one o'clock? Let's do that.
I make a motion.
So that it's.
Memorial weekend.
I'm sorry.
It's a week.
It's, it's, it's the Wednesday after, after Memorial Day.
Okay.
Memorial Day's on Monday, so.
Did I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
On this?
On this. All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Okay, motion's ended. Alright, important dates, look at your important dates and don't forget about the, uh, four-thirty workshop at our next meeting, which is, uh, April sixteenth. We'll have a workshop at four-thirty with Good Bill and whatever else we need to talk about as far as the long-range plan is concerned. And the concert starts April. Well, yes.
Sounds like spring.
Thursday evenings, uh, every Thursday evening that wasn't mentioned, so you might wanna look at the, uh, Facebook page and look at the schedule. And if you have not seen the stuffed animal overnight trip video, you need to watch it. It's a hoot. So see what the stuffed animals did on their overnight. But anybody that.
I had just a question on the Louisville book drop. What's, what's happening with that and what kind of response have you had?
So the re- the book return portion has been overwhelming. We, there are so many patrons that return their items there, which is more than we thought was gonna happen. With the new patron services manager and, and we have discussed, patrons now will be able to place holes on any single item in the library. Currently, how it stay, how it's, how it stands now is patrons could only place a hole on items that were checked out, were changing that. So if you wanna check out a James Patterson book that's available, right now, we would do that. So we would have, we called it a holes list where I came from, where it was run three times a day, morning, afternoon, and then in the evening. And that would be pulling the holes. It would specify if the hole is here at the library or at the locker. So we're gonna go that route. We didn't do that at the start. I wanted to wait until Rebecca started and then brought to her attention.
So is the, is the community of Louisville actually using this?
Yes, yes.
In. Well, a large extent or, or what you thought or?
I, I, I think we could always improve and I think having all the holes be available for every single item in the library, I'd like to see where that goes. But as far as returning books, that's been, that's been excellent.
So is it, it's, it's a winner?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Has there been any follow-up discussions with that city? Uh, yeah, is it Alderman or, or is the mayor?
It's Alderman over there.
Um, in terms of, would there be any, any discussion or opportunity to discuss sharing the responsibility of the travel, you know, opportunities that way, anything like that?
No, I think it's, it still should be on us to do that, yeah.
Anything else?
I thought you were gonna go to drama.
I would love to. Uh, that would be awesome if you can get it on board.
Okay, next staff development? Library staff has thrown. Start with the cheap one, cause I'm not very good at that.
Quick question, follow-up from earlier, um, Harris drill. Um, is that something that would happen in isolation here at the library or would that be part of a larger county exercise?
Library.
Just library.
Yeah, okay.
And then it's gonna focus on swatting right now.
Correct, yeah, which I didn't know about and Andy and I learned about it yesterday. Um, swat, swat.
With a swat.
Not fly swat, I'm just. Do you wanna explain swatting better than?
No, I have no idea. I'm still.
The call.
It's, I think in context of like gaming or people that are live streaming is where that is where I think where it started. People would live stream a video game and you would find out, other people that were playing against them would find out where that person lived and they'd call in a bomb threat or a hostage threat at that address.
SWAT team comes.
The SWAT team busts down that guy's door and turns his electricity off so he can't play his game anymore. Um, that's how it started. It was.
Yeah.
It happened.
But now people, people use it much more maliciously.
Yeah, it's happened, she said it happened recently.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of scary because oftentimes it almost results in fatalities, you know?
She didn't say that, yeah.
Yeah, so.
And it happened in so case I had to the tune of a hundred, about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars and. Cause they had to shut all, everything down and getting it back online and then, so it was pretty, yeah, it's pretty big stuff.
Yeah, it's a, it's a big problem, I think.
Swatting.
Go, love. Any other discussion, Adam? Do I have a motion?
I, I knew that we, I knew that we had. Sixteen before thirty P M.
Second, second. All in favor? Thank you all.